We will now move to the consent agenda. City manager, are there any additions or deletions? Additional additions or deletions?
Just the item, the 9A.
Thank you very much. I need a motion in a second. Ladies and gentlemen, are we pulling any items from the consent agenda? Or are we just not? Fine, I'm passing the gavel, Vice Mayor. I second the motion for consent. Please proceed. I'm calling the roll. That's all you get. Please proceed for calling the roll.
City clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you. Mayor Gomez.
Yes.
Commissioner Villa Lobos.
Yes.
Commissioner Bolton.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Gallin.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, four to zero.
Thank you. All right, let's hope we can get through the rest of this agenda. Ladies and gentlemen, are we here to do the business of the city?
Apparently not, Mayor, but second, I, so moved.
If we did not prepare for today, why are we here? And if this is a way to just get the gavel, Vice Mayor, have fun, because we're going to do the work of the city. I will second the motion. Are you kidding me?
Before you do that, Mayor, I'd like to request a recess.
Recess granted. Commissioner Villa Lobos.
Mayor, considering that Commissioner Bolton and Vice Mayor Gallin do not wish to fulfill their fiduciary duties to the city and to the residents, I'd like to make a motion to move this agenda to the next agenda meeting and adjourn this meeting.
As much as I would like to do that, we're not going to get that approved, probably. It'll just be you and I, and we're going to be stuck in the same situation. So, but I will pass the gavel and say, second. Are you willing to now take the call of roll or discussion?
City clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mayor Gomez.
Yes.
Commissioner Bolton.
No.
Commissioner Villa Lobos.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Gallin.
No.
Motion fails, two to two.
So we will start again. 5A has been read into the record. I need a motion in a second.
I have a motion in a second. On 5A. Sorry, Madam Mayor, you have a motion by Commissioner Villa Lobos and a second by Mayor Gomez.
Okay, so Vice Mayor, are you going to run this? And this is not how you get my position, just so you know.
The floor is now open for a public comment. Any comments from the public? No comments from the public, so we'll close public comment. We have the Assistant Director of Public Services, Troy Geis, available for discussion. Does anyone in the commission have any questions for the director? Seeing none, city clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you. Mayor Gomez. Commissioner Bolton.
Yes.
Commissioner Villa Lobos.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Gallin.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously, four to zero.
Thank you very much. We are now going to 5B, TR 13770, a resolution of the City Commission, City of Tamarack. City Attorney, please read the full title for the record.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the commission. This is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Tamarack, Florida, amending the benefit plan for individuals covered under the non-bargaining benefit plan effective January 1st, 2023, authorizing appropriate budget transfers, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you very much. I need a motion in a second. Absolutely ridiculous. Second. And let the record reflect the non-participation of our commission.
Public comment is open. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, any questions from the commission or comments? Lorenzo, do you have a presentation?
Good morning, Vice Mayor, Mayor, members of the commission, Lorenzo Calhoun, Director of Human Resources. For the record, I do not have a presentation. I am available if you have questions.
All right, seeing no questions, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
I have a question. My light was lit. You're not paying attention.
You are recognized, Commissioner Villa Lobos.
Can you go into some details and the public comments made on behalf of the, just the budget items, like changes that occurred? Anything that you can explain to the public that would help them understand why this item was on this agenda?
Sure. So this item is before the commission to amend the benefit option dollars for non-bargaining pay plan members. That would include any supervisory personnel, members of management, administrative assistance throughout the city. This particular item is requested to be amended to update the amount of the benefit option dollars. Benefit option dollars are provided to employees to offset the cost of insurance. As you know, the cost of insurance has skyrocketed over the last probably 10 to 15 years. So the city supplements the, the money for employees to help offset the cost of the money that employees paid toward their insurance coverage. And right now, they receive $1,850 for the year to help offset the cost of insurance. We are proposing to increase that to $2,000. We recently conducted some research and also recruited candidates, and it's my understanding that other cities offer more than the City of Tamarack offers. For example, in Howlanddale, they offer up to $3,000 just for individual coverage. So in order for us to stay competitive, we are recommending that that amount be increased to $2,000 for full-time employees and $1,000 for part-time employees. The second thing that we are seeking to amend in this particular item is to normalize the personal days for employees. Right now, they receive 21 hours per year that they either use or lose. There's no, no value, no monetary value attached to that. What we are seeking to do is make that a solid 24 hours so that employees can take the days off in the way that they earn it, which is eight hours, or would be three days.
You used the word competitive. Can you get into details as to what's happening in the market with the city's employees retention?
Yes. So from a retention perspective, we are doing well, but from an attrition perspective, we have a number of employees who are retiring so that when we go out to recruit, we are finding that employees are leveraging the offers that we extend to them to negotiate with their, either their current employer for more money, or for better benefits, or with a competitor that we are also in the market with for their services or employment services. So in order for us to stay competitive, we have to make sure that we offer a competitive benefits package. We do from a perspective of the benefit option dollars, as well as the personal leave, as well as the vacation accrual, sick accrual, and the pension plan that we offer.
Thank you, Mr. Lorenzo.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the dais? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Villa Lobos.
Yes.
Mayor Gomez.
Yes.
Commissioner Bolton.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Gallin.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, four to zero.
Thank you. We are on 5C, TR 13771.
Point of order, Mayor.
Commissioner Villa Lobos.
To the city attorney through the chair. The lack of responses that we're getting from the dais at the moment is causing a lot of friction in this unity which we have discussed. Is there any law against lack of participation on commission members?
There, no.
Thank you.
Point of order question to the city attorney. There are accusations of lack of participation, but the full commission is participating. The commission has a right to second, to choose a second emotion or choose not to second emotion. That does not equate to non-participation. Can you elaborate on that?
Vice Mayor, that is your opinion and your defense.
I asked the attorney to clarify. I have access to the attorney. Mr. Attorney, please address the question.
The question, it being, if your question versus your commentary, the question is, is there anything regarding participation? He answered it. The rest of it is your opinion. So, to the attorney.
No, no.
Answer my question, please.
Very simply, no particular commissioner is obligated to second any particular item on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are now going to proceed with this meeting. If, ladies and gentlemen, we have some very important items here. Our employees are looking to see how we are handling things. We have business community here, hoping to have business being done in our city accordingly and professionally. Can we please proceed professionally? City Attorney, please read the title for the record.
Next item is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Tamarack, Florida, authorizing the appropriate city officials to execute an agreement with the Federation of Public Employees, a division of the National Federation of Public and Private Employees affiliated with District 1-MEBA in Prince AFL-CIO for the period from October 1st, 2021, through September 30th, 2023, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. I need a motion in a second.
Motion to approve.
This is a second. I will second this. And now the gavel will go to the net, no, used motion, second. It now goes to the former Vice Mayor, which was Alvin Villa Lobos.
We'll open up the floor to public comments. Public comments are closed. Mr. Lorenzo, Director of Human Resources, available for questions? Any questions from the dais? Any discussion? City clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Commissioner Villa Lobos. Vice Mayor Gallin.
Yes.
Commissioner Bolton.
Yes.
Commissioner Villa Lobos.
Yes.
And Mayor Gomez.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously, four to zero.
Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Gomez.
May I be recognized? Thank you. Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the commission, I would like to take this opportunity to thank the commission for their guidance and direction during the negotiation process. The agreement reached between the parties is a direct result of the collaborative hard work and dedication between the cities and the unions bargaining teams. From the cities bargaining team, I would like to thank Rodney Sims, Tom Vreeland, Whitney Neff, Jeff Streeter, Melissa Taylor, Judith Henry, Lorenzo Calhoun, John Heron, and the city's labor council, Robert Soloff. Also, thank you to the employees representatives, Mike Morrison, Carrick Wiggins, Charlene Nevadomsky, and Greg Ledsworth. The employees covered under the contract overwhelmingly voted 118 to 3 in favor of the collective bargaining agreement. The cities and the unions bargaining teams feel this is a fair and equitable contract which will provide much-needed and anticipated salary increases to our employees. Finally, I would like to congratulate our new employees on a new two-year agreement. You more than deserve it.
Thank you to our wonderful employees and all the hard work from dedication and time that went into this collective bargaining agreement from all, from everybody. Commissioner Villa Lobos, did you have a comment, or is that just? Okay, thank you. We're now moving to our ordinances on second reading. City Attorney, please read the title for the record of 8A, TO 2492.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor, members of the commission, this is an ordinance, City Commission of the City of Tamarack, Florida, amending ordinance 20-21031, which adopted the City of Tamarack operating budget revenues and expenditures, the capital budget, and the financial policies for fiscal year 2022 by increasing the total revenues and expenditures by a total of $2,324,602 as detailed in attachment A, attached here too, and summarized in attachment B, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. I need a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Public comments are now open. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this matter? Mr. Yoder? No, okay. Seeing that nobody wishes to speak, public comments are now closed. Christine Cudjus, our Director of Financial Services, is available for any questions. And I will just share, any questions? Mr. Yoder, you had some questions earlier. I think it would be a wonderful opportunity, if you would, to speak with Ms. Cudjus, and she'll be happy to explain and clarify a few things that you had. Okay? Seeing there's no comment by the commission, please call the roll.
Do you wish to speak to her, just want to?
He's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Gomez.
Yes.
Commissioner Bolton.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gallin.
Yes.
And Commissioner Villa Lobos.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, four to zero.
Thank you. Now going to ordinances on second reading. 8B, TO 2495. City Attorney, please read the title for the record.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, members of the commission, this is an ordinance, the City Commission of the City of Tamarack, Florida, amending Chapter 10, Article 4, entitled Development and Design Standards by amending Section 10-4.10, entitled Signs, the City of Tamarack Code of Ordinances, by specifically amending Section 10-4.10C, entitled Comprehensive Sign Plan, CSP. Section 10-4.10D, entitled General Sign Requirements. Section 10-4.10E, entitled Design Criteria. Section 10-4.10F, entitled Construction and Location. And Section 10-4.4H, entitled Temporary Signs. And Section 10-4.10M, entitled Non-Conforming Signs, to provide for updated signage regulations in support of economic development opportunities citywide, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you very much. I need a motion in a second.
The floor is open for public comment.
Good morning. Mel Yoder, Kings Point, Tamarack. I think it's great that signage is being addressed by the city. Being one that has driven around the block numerous times trying to find a business, definitely need to work on that. I've also operated a business on the west coast of Florida and was totally hamstrung by the county as far as signage. I'm well aware of the need for good visible signage. Good visible signage can add 10 to 15% in sales for a business. I know the city doesn't want to look like Tammy-Hammy Trail with large roadside signs every several feet. And allowing the business to have 40% of the window covered by a sign is fine, but it doesn't do any good if the landscaping regulations and restrictions by the city and county make it next to impossible to see it from the road. Again, driving around the block several times trying to find a business blocked by vegetation isn't fun. In addition, I feel it can lead to an increased incidence of accidents. Definitely look at adjusting the signage regulations for the good of the businesses, but keep in mind that those signs also need to be seen from the road. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Yoder. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Director of Community Development is able, any questions to the public and the dais? Any comments or questions from the dais? Vice Commissioner Villa Lobos, you recognize?
Just for those that have not heard or not privy to what's going on here we're about to vote on, can you just, in a minute or two, explain what this program's about, this item's about? Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you can address that question, if possible.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, for the record, Maxine Callaway, Director of Community Development. As discussed in my presentation, this is really to provide some relief to the businesses to allow visibility in signage for marketing. We are addressing window signs and increasing the coverage from currently 15% to 40%. We are also making changes to nameplate building identification sign. We're requiring that the buildings now be identified in the rear as well. We're making changes to menu board signs, which was never covered in the code, and so now we're having regulations for menu boards and those for primarily restaurants. We're making changes as well to directory and to directional signs, which were very small, about three or four square feet. We're increasing those to be consistent with the signage requirements that we currently have for monument signs, and that is to allow for businesses to be more visible. And we're also making changes to off-premises sign, previously not allowed in the code. Now, provided you get approval from the property owner, you can have signage off-premises directing people to your business if your business is not very, very visible from the public right of way.
Any other questions from the commission?
Yes, I'm lit.
You recognize Mayor Gomez.
So you did mention that we are working on the landscaping to make sure that the sun, the numbers can be seen. We have been also working on our cities' aesthetics, but also being able to find places, our wayfinding, wayfinding signs. I don't know if you have an update for us at this moment. I know it's on the spot, but if you don't have it right now, if you can get back to us with the status of our wayfinding signs.
Sure, I'll provide an email on that, but you're correct, Mayor. This body did approve in the budget funds to fund a citywide wayfinding program that will give pedestrians and motorists direction to certain places throughout the city. I think that includes over 52 signs that will be placed throughout the city, giving direction on various locations. I'll provide an update as to where we are with that.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Bolton, do you have a comment?
Yes, Vice Mayor. Ms. Callaway, a question for you. Has staff worked with the business community on this to make sure that they would be satisfied with the changes that are being made?
Yes, Commissioner, we did. In fact, this has been over a year, two years in the making. Of course, some impact due to COVID, but we did do a business roundtable, got feedback from the business community, and much of the changes that you are approving today came from the business community in terms of what they'd like to see.
Okay. Thank you so very much. Vice Mayor, I have a question for the Public Services Director. Interim, or assistant? Both you and Ms. Callaway can, can stay.
Good morning. For the record, John Doherty, Acting Director of Public Services.
Okay, thank you, John. The resident spoke to vegetation and plants maybe impeding visibility of businesses. Can you speak to that for a moment? Do you, do you agree with the resident's de minimis?
I can address that, Commissioner. We do have requirements in the code that speaks to the height of hedge material, which is one thing that can block visibility, so that has to be maintained no greater than a certain height, so we don't believe that's an issue. Trees sometimes can do that, and so we try very much to work with property owners to make sure that they can cut back whatever vegetation on trees, trimming them, because for the most part, we don't manage a tree that's broad county when it comes to tree removal and tree upkeep. That sometime can be difficult, but if we do get a complaint on tree blocking a sign, we try to reach out to that property owner and ask them to do some trimming, just to make sure that the sign is more visible. But as it relates to the hedge material, we do have regulations that govern the height.
Ms. Callaway, often when we are approving new businesses moving into the city, we have, you know, the requirements for vegetation and that sort of stuff, but I see very seldom that we regulate it, we go out and maintain it, or ask them to maintain it. What is the city doing where that is concerned?
We do have regulations on the book as it relates to non-residential and residential maintenance requirements, so we have conducted a sweep. In fact, I think we're scheduled to bring an update to you regarding what we have done relative to businesses as it relates to code enforcement violations, but that is active in the code enforcement department. We do have a commercial officer whose job is primarily to go out and to find any violations and to make sure that landscaping for property is consistent with a site plan that has been approved. So at some point, at a future workshop, we do have an update for you as it relates to what is going on with those businesses.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. And Mr. Doherty.
Yes, just to add to that, there are certain regulations and shrub heights requirements for right-of-way landscaping as well, which can impede the vision of cars passing by businesses and such.
Do you have any examples of any sites in Tamarack that are being impeded by the vegetation or the height of trees?
No, we have an ongoing landscaping contract, and that landscaping contractor is required to keep our shrubbery at a certain height, which is 36 inches in our rightaways and our, in our mediums.
So at this time, there's, there's none?
Correct. Not to my knowledge.
Thank you.
Okay, with no further questions from the commission, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you. Commissioner Villa Lobos.
Yes.
Mayor Gomez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gallin.
Yes.
And Commissioner Bolton.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously, four to zero.
Thank you. We are now going to what is on our agenda as 9B, TB's O52, Bolero, Tamarack Variances. City Attorney, please read the title for the record.
There is no specific resolution related to this. What will happen is that if there's an approval, staff has drafted a, and it's in your agenda packet, a proposed order that will be executed.
As this is a quasi judicial, will you please?
Read the quasi judicial rules.
Yes, please.
Yes, ma'am.
And swear on any witnesses?
Yes, ma'am. Pursuant to the city code, all persons testifying before the city commission must be sworn in. The petitioner and any affected person shall be given the opportunity to present evidence, bring forth witnesses, cross-examine any witness, and rebut any testimony. All evidence relied upon reasonably proven persons that conduct their business shall be admissible, whether such evidence would be admissible in court of law. However, immaterial, unduly repetitious evidence shall be excluded. Statements of counsel shall only be considered as argument and not be considered as testimony. Counsel for party shall not be subject to cross-examination. The city commission shall have the authority to refuse to hear any testimony which is irrelevant or repetitive. Hearsay evidence must be used for the purposes of supplementing or explaining evidence, which shall not be, shall not be sufficient by itself supporting a finding. The proceeding shall be conducted in an informal manner, and generally, the order presentation is follows. The applicant goes first in this particular instance, then staff makes its presentation. Any people wishing to speak on behalf of the applicant will have an opportunity to then speak. Those in opposition in like order. And then finally, city personnel in attendance can provide responses to any party to the proceedings. Final presentations by the petitioner and city staff will be the last item. And finally, the city commission shall deliberate on the petition. No further testimony shall be taken, and the members of the city commission shall not ask further questions of persons presenting testimony. The city commission shall discuss the evidence that was presented at the proceeding and vote on the petition. Because this is a quasi judicial proceeding, all those that are going to testify or provide any testimony here this morning, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? The witnesses have been sworn, last in accordance with the city's adopted quasi judicial procedures. It would be appropriate this time for members of the commission to disclose any ex parte communications you may have had with respect to this item. Ex parte communications do also include site visits.
Commissioner Bolton.
Mayor, I have no ex parte.
No disclosures?
Nothing.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
No disclosures.
None.
Villa Lobos, no disclosure. I have disclosures. I've been to the bowling alley. I bowled, and I've also had a meeting, and the meeting was November 17th, I believe, 20, 21. And I've also had a meeting, and the meeting was November 17th, I believe, 2021, with the Bolero team and city staff. And so those are my, and I've had conversations over the year, actually before COVID, when they came to our city and they were talking about certain design implementations that they were looking for in the city. And so I've had plenty of contact and communication with Team Bolero. And this matter is now before us for variances on the designs that we've seen in our workshop, in our backup, and you'll be presenting. Which one of you gentlemen will be presenting? Ron? Mom? Ms. Callaway?
Mayor, if I might just read the item into the record before the applicant begins his presentation?
That's fine. I only have case numbers here, so if you have a fuller...
Yeah.
Please.
It's a variance to allow for the relief of multiple sections of Section 10-4.10 of the city's Code of Ordinances for five new signs on each elevation of the building.
Thank you. Mr. Barr?
Just for point of clarification, I'm Ron Barr. I'm the architect on the project. This is Andreas Rispato from Bolero.
That's what I thought, but when I said Ron Barr earlier, you stood up and I thought I was wrong. So I apologize.
I was outside on the phone.
Okay.
You are actually totally right. I'm not sure I need a microphone. I'm pretty loud. Good morning, everyone. My name is Andres Restrepo. I am the Senior Vice President of Concept Development for Bolero. To make it short and sweet, I created the brand Bolero. So we put together a short presentation to try to give everybody an idea of what Bolero is, what the company is, and a little bit of the history of the company. So we are the largest bowling operator in the world. We own and operate over 300 centers in the United States. We have an average of 28 million guests combined per year. We have about 9,000 employees currently. We also acquired the PBA a few years back as part of our commitment to the sport of bowling. And we went public last year on December 16 in a deal that we made as part of a SPAC effort. I want to share some of the pictures on some of the recent projects that we have. This is what one of our centers looks inside. We are highly committed to design and to providing the communities that we are part of with a longstanding site for recreation for families, not just for adults, but for kids as well. We like to think of ourselves as a generational gap. Bowling for a very long time was a sport that was seeing numbers decrease. League bowlers were not being replaced. And when we created this concept, we allowed the opportunity for generations to mingle and have fun together around the bowling activities. For instance, grandfathers that have been league members for a very long time could not convince their grandchildren to come with them to a bowling alley because there was really nothing there for kids. That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to create and extend that generational bridge so families can actually come and enjoy the sport of bowling. I'm just going to go through this quickly. I know you guys are busy. These are some of, some pictures of some of our recent projects. This is what we do. We put a lot of emphasis in design. And we try to make the space accommodating for everybody, including kids. So this here, it's, it's part of the design package that we are proposing for the interior in the Sawgrass Bowling Center that we own, not too far from here. I think we're about a mile and a half from it. This is what we're trying to do inside. It is a huge financial commitment for us. I think we're estimated at about $3 million to do the interior renovations on this center. Does anybody have any questions about the interior, about anything that I have said so far?
We'll go through questions after.
Perfect. Thank you. This is the current exterior of the building. It's, as you can see on the top, it's an extremely dilapidated building. Doesn't really say anything, doesn't scream fun. It's not conducive to anyone thinking that it is a new business. We bought this property about three and a half years ago, four years ago. As you can see, the exterior is extremely dilapidated. The signage is minimal. There's nothing that really tells people that this place is under new management or that this is a new and invigorating and dynamic brand like Bolero is. So the bottom, you can see what we are proposing on the facade. And I'm just going to go through this quickly so you can see the rest of the elevations for the entirety of the building. We're just trying to increase the visibility to the building and to the brand. Basically, is what we're trying to do, so we can remain as a viable business for the community for years to come. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Callaway, do you have a presentation that you wish to put on at this time?
Commissioner, I can go through quickly and just focus on the five variances for each elevation, if that's going to be helpful.
Yes, please. Thank you.
All right, I'll just go through. So of course, the site location, we know that it's indoor recreation. It's a bowling alley in Commissioner Blackwell's District, District 4. It's 8501 North University Drive. And then just some property information, the size of the property, and the points of egress to access the property. Just some background on the property. It was constructed in 1976, and then it's 58,000 square feet. There's a previous tenant that was Sawgrass Lanes that was there for 13 years, and then it vacated the site in 2019. And just so you can see the current condition from the various angles, the northeast quadrant and the northwest quadrant from South Gate Boulevard and from University Drive, just some existing photos just to give you some more information. The Bolero Tamarac Five Sign Variance and just some ingress and egress is several points of ingress to the property. So I'm just going through the site, and this is the site plan that's showing how the property is accessed from South Gate, from University Drive as well. All right, so the variances, the first variance is on the east elevation. That's the elevation that you can see from University Drive. That elevation, elevation one, the variance is the request for an additional 15 inches on the sign for a total of 48 inches requested. The east elevation is, the code requires 34 inches maximum. The applicant is requesting an additional 26 for a total of 60 inches requested, and that's for the emblem or their logo of the sign. On the north elevation, the code requires 24 maximum. The applicant is requesting an additional 84 inches for a total of 108 inches total for that signage. And the west elevation, which is sign number four, the code requires 18 inches maximum. The applicant is requesting an additional 54 for a total of 72 inches. And the last sign is the south elevation, 18 inches maximum required by the code. The applicant is requesting an additional 78 inches for that signage to be a total of 96 inches in size. And this is just the various sections of the code that the applicant is requesting relief from. So I'm just going to go to the signs individually. This is the east elevation. This is the elevation that's facing University Drive. The top, of course, is the existing building. And the bottom is showing the painting, the facade, and then that Bolero sign. This elevation, it's two variance requests for the Bolero sign itself as well as for the logo that you see to the right. That's an additional signage that is going on the east elevation. So the sign variance is for the size as well as to allow a second sign on the east elevation. And this is also just focusing on the second, that logo and the dimension for the logo. So once again, the variance for the east elevation has to do with the size itself and then to allow a second sign, which in this case is the logo, to be on the east elevation. And then just some additional slides, just to show how you'll be able to see that sign. This is for the north elevation. And the request again is for the Bolero sign that will be featured on the north elevation. And this variance request is related to the size of the sign. And then just some pictures, just showing how you'd be able to see that sign, from what viewpoint. This is the west elevation. And this is for, just to break up the long facade of that building. We've asked the applicant to put something just to break it up, just to have some kind of character for the exterior of this facade. So this variance is to allow a sign on this elevation where a sign would not be necessarily allowed in our code. And lastly, is the south elevation. Once again, the applicant will be putting a logo on this elevation just to break up the length of the building. And this has to do with the size. And also, this elevation, the code does not allow it to have a sign. And so the variance is also to allow the logo on this elevation as well. And I can stop here and take your questions. This is just going through the variance section of the code, and staff is in support of this variance. The application was heard by the planning board, who also supported all five variance requests.
Thank you very much. Before we go to questions, I need a motion of second for this item.
Same motion.
Second.
Thank you very much. We've got a motion of second. We're now going to open this up for public comments. Mr. Wasserman? He has already been sworn in. But you will need to repeat for the record, please. Thank you.
Ron Wasserman, 8577 J Drive, Tamarac. So I just want to speak. I live down the street from this project. I live off of South Gate. I live in the community of Shangri-La. This project adjoins Woodmine Country Club. So I just would like to ask, a very nice presentation, by the way, very nice. But the new owners really haven't done anything as far as improvements around the property. You know what I'm talking about. So are you going to get to it later on? Or are you just going to do the improvements of visibility? So again, I'm a local resident. That bowling alley has been there for a long time. So I'm just asking for the Commission to potentially look at any faults, if there are any, and to continue to work on these type of projects. So it was very interesting, by the way, that the PBA is now owned by the gentleman sitting behind me. Well, I used to watch TV and see those PBA contests. So ladies and gentlemen, as an active community member, you all know me. People behind me know me. Try to do the right thing here. This is another project. But there've been many projects that were approved that needed a lot of help. So thank you for listening to me. Again, if I've raised my voice in this commission, I apologize. I'm a retired auctioneer, if that means anything, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Wasserman. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to make any comments at this time? Seeing none, public comments are now closed. Ms. Callaway, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yes, I neglected, and I went through the slides so quickly. But just to respond to Mr. Wasserman, the staff worked diligently with the applicant for several months. Significant improvements are being proposed for the site. It's included in my presentation, so I can bring it back up if that's necessary, so I can show you. But it's an administrative minor site plan amendment, so this body will not see those changes. Staff will go through them. It will go through the DRC process as well. And significant landscaping improvement to the parking lot. As you can see, the facade will be updated as well. But the landscaping would be improved as well as the parking lot.
If you wouldn't mind just showing, there was one or two photos up there that had some of the parking lot and the lighting, some stuff about that. So I know it doesn't come back before us, but I'd like it to just be on the screen so people can see the additional work that the DRC, the Planning Council, the Planning Board, and everything that the team actually does.
I think it was his presentation that had that.
Yeah.
I was, I saw that.
I think it was in the applicant's presentation.
We can bring back the applicant, but I know I saw yours that had the corners, you know, on the lines. Just so people know that there's a lot more that goes into this than just sometimes what you see towards the end.
Keep going. So that's just the facade, and you can see the paint and the improvement?
Okay.
Okay, let's keep it on there.
Good. All right. Thank you very much. Now that seeing that there's no other comments, we went to Ms. Maxine. She finished what she had. Commissioner Villa Lovas?
Yes, thank you for your investment in the city with Sawgrass Lanes into Bolero. That was my question was what Ms. Maxine just brought up, which was the landscaping, the curbs, the streets. Because we know that it gets a little bumpy there. But so thank you very much for that, and thank you for the clarification, Ms. Maxine.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. How many of these reservations, how many of these renovations have you done in the past?
We have done more than 150. We acquired AMF back in 2013. And as part of that effort was to reinvigorate the sport of bowling. Most of the bowling alleys that AMF owned were dilapidated, run-down buildings. So we have made a significant commitment in terms of capital to renovate in these buildings.
And did you analyze the attendance and the revenues of Sawgrass Lanes before acquiring this?
We did. That is part of the negotiation.
Okay.
Definitely, we saw potential. That building did not get a lot of investment for a long, long time. And I think that's what the community was seeing. The previous owners, either because they didn't have the capital or didn't have the interest to invest, didn't really do much with the building. And it was, it was in poor condition when we took over. So we definitely took a gamble. It was a roll of the dice. But we were definitely interested in renovating the building and making it a staple for the community.
And what are your projections in terms of if attendance was, you know, 5,000 a month with the, under the last operation? What are your projections for this?
I would love this place to do $6 million a year. And I think it has the potential to do so, given the size of it. So it is not far-fetched to think that we could, we could hit that milestone. It will require some work, some investment in terms of marketing, but we are willing to do so. As I told you, our main goal is for Sawgrass Lanes, Bolero Sawgrass, to, Bolero Tamarac, to remain a viable business so we can remain within the community, provide not just entertainment for the community, but also tax dollars for the city as well as employment.
How long will it take for your renovation? You're going to invest $3 million. How long will it take before it'll be ready for a grand opening?
We usually do these renovations while we are, while we are open and operating. It is more complex. It costs more money because sometimes you have to do after-hours work and you have to pay for that. But our interest is to keep the place open so the community can continue to enjoy it. And then we will probably plan a relaunch with some marketing and some publishers behind it.
What year, '24, '25?
Everything depends on the outcome today and how quickly we can get our permits for construction.
Okay. And then you mentioned the fact that, you know, bowling has lost some interest with the youth, and you talked about making it more of a family environment. Are you also considering having like a youth league and partnering with some of the schools so that we can have more young people playing bowling?
Absolutely. We actually do that with a lot of different communities. We have a community outreach program where we can do that. And I think that we have held youth-oriented events already at Sawgrass Lanes in the last couple of years. Obviously, COVID was a punch in the gut for everybody. But we have had events in the past that involve the community.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bolton?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Gillen has taken much of my questions. But I just want to take the opportunity to thank the gentleman for coming to our city and for investing in Sawgrass Lanes now Bolero. I think that it's a worthwhile investment, and you will not regret it. I know that this topic is on the subject of variances and not necessarily your business model. But Tamrec needs a place for people to go and sit down, and not just bowl, but to eat. And so as you are renovating and thinking about your business plans, think about, you know, that idea as well. And just to say that, be a good neighbor to the city of Tamrec. We have a veterans park across the street. And very, a couple of times per year, or at least once or twice, very important events are Memorial Day and Veterans Day. And so sometimes residents would want to park on your property. So I hope that you'll be a very good neighbor and not necessarily tow those vehicles when, if and when it happens. But other than that, thank you so very much for coming to the city of Tamrec. Really appreciate your business and hope you have a great success and all the best in your endeavors.
Thank you. Really appreciate the comments and the good wishes. We do have a full kitchen. So we do serve a full menu. If people just want to come and have dinner, watch the game on one of our giant screens, they can do so. We do have a full kitchen with a full menu at all times. In terms of parking, I cannot commit to anything because I am not the direct operator. So I'm not involved in the day-to-day operations. I can tell you that as a business practice, we try to be good neighbors with other businesses around us. It is in everyone's best interest to do so, to cultivate good relationships with our neighbors, so long as parking, in our parking lot, does not interfere with our business and our ability to provide parking for our customers. I don't think that will be an issue. But again, I can't make any commitments because I am not involved in the day-to-day operations. Thank you.
Thank you. And you brought up some of the stuff that I was going to ask you about. You've been in our community for the past few years. And just before COVID, I know you did a full remodel of your kitchen. You've done a full remodel of the inside. Some of the photos, I didn't see much of what you've done here in Tamrec. Not asking you to bring a presentation back. Instead, I'll just invite everybody to go to Bolero and see it because you've done a great job. Bolero has been host to our Parrot Bowling Tournament, our Tamrec North Lauderdale Chamber of Commerce Tournament, our Kiwanis Bowling Tournament. And you've been very receptive, very helpful. It was a lot of fun, the last one we had there, and kept very nice and clean. And you've done some wonderful additions there, and I know you're going to continue to do so. And I know that the team there will continue to work with us for our events. And I know, maybe you can share how things are going. I believe it's on Davie, on State Road 84. And I believe you also have now one south on University, South Griffin, is that correct? How are those two locations going?
They're doing great. We came back from COVID with a vengeance. Not only COVID did not take us down, we came out stronger. Our numbers are the best they have ever been. The communities have really welcomed us. And we couldn't be happier or more thankful to the communities for coming and supporting the business. It is a testament to what we've been trying to do, becoming a fundamental part of the community. I think that our numbers are simply the reflection of the support that the communities show us and show our business. If we were not a good business, if we were not providing a good service to the communities, I don't think our numbers will be that good. The numbers are staggering. We actually recently signed another lease here in Florida, not too far from here in Miami Downtown, a huge development, Miami World Center. We also opened one right before COVID in Dania Beach. It's another location that we opened. It's doing exceptionally well. And the numbers in Davie, I would say that after the renovation and the relaunch as Bolero, probably double. We probably double our revenue. So the communities have been very welcoming for us here in Florida.
Thank you. And when it comes to some of the construction, you are bordered by the school on the south, on business, our park. And then on the west is the communities. So as applicable, if you would, with the planning on any kind of construction, anything that would block any traffic, if you would be so kind that we can get notice to the community association so they can alert the residents. And this way, we keep everything where people know it's a short period of time, that they will have a slight inconvenience. They may not. You might be able to put most of the construction inside where much won't be on the outside to block the roadway. But would appreciate that. As somebody who went bowling every Saturday for umpteen years of her life, which gave mom and dad some peace and quiet in the house. And it was great to be with people and enjoy it, and then go bowling with my family,